It's February 27, 2024. The time is 2:02 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Metari, and Duncan. Please join us for a moment of silence. All right, and Julina, would you like to lead us in the pledge? All right, public comments. All right, changes to the agenda. There's one. Under an emergency, I would like to add an electrical inspection for Cootney North Building. We got the information late on Friday. It's for, I believe, about $2,750. Lieutenant, does that sound about right? Okay, thank you. And the reason is, we are trying to do inspections because we have a bid that is going to expire in the next few weeks, and we want to make sure that we get the inspections out there before that expiration. So, Dave, does that fulfill your emergency?
Yes.
Okay, so I would move that to item nine. We add the additional inspection for electrical.
I move that we add the additional inspection for electrical for item nine today.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, and minutes, please.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes, items one through four.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, and consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar, item five.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, and payables, please.
I move that we approve payables, February 19 through 23, 2024, in the amount of $695,721.12 and jury panel payments in the amount of $2,147.45.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, all right, thank you. Item seven, this is a bid award, and it's for an RFQ for the jail pod buildout and our sheriff's jail portion. And Captain Heil.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeremy Heil, for the record. I'm here to award or recommend award for the RFQ bid jail pod buildout that was unsealed two weeks ago to the only company that put in for it, which was Sletton, who is the company that built Unit 4 to its completion as it stands right now.
Okay, and then just as a reminder, they're actually going to act as the contract. Well, it's actually construction manager at risk, right? So essentially, they're what David Mendez is providing for us now.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Okay, questions?
No questions.
Okay, motion.
I move that we approve the bid award, bid number RFQ for the jail pod buildout with the sheriff's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, but that was for Sletton, I think. Do we have to say the name on the record, right? Because we just awarded a bid, awarded the RFQ.
I think Captain Heil already made a record.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item eight, board approval request. This is the 2024 RBS, the recreational boating safety grant agreement with our Rec Safety and Lieutenant Miller. Are you on the phone?
Sergeant Miller, yes, I am on the phone.
I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. No worries. I am before you asking permission to submit the, for the 2024 RBS grant. The total grant allocation this year is $147,857. Requires a $73,928.50 grant match. And the total budget for the year would be $221,785.50.
And is that for eight marine, I'm sorry, 12 marine deputies, part-time?
That's what the hope is. As of right now, I believe we have seven or eight in background, so we're not going to hit the 12 number for the marine deputies. But we have several patrol deputies that are not going to go to the academy till August, so we would get those as well.
That sounds great. Questions, motion?
I move that we approve request 2024 RBS recreational boating safety grant agreement for the sheriff's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, all right, item nine, this is the.
Commissioner.
Thank you. KC North HVAC service proposal along with the electrical inspection. And Lieutenant Klinka, please.
Yes, ma'am, Lieutenant Klinka, Sheriff's Office, for the record. So before you was an inspection estimate from CTC Electric for $2,750 to inspect the facility. And then an HVAC and air quality inspection from Apollo for $3,955. That one included inspecting all the HVAC equipment and doing environmental air sampling for mold containment.
Okay.
It did not include any other environmental concerns, other than mold in the air.
Okay, questions, motion?
I think that we should include other environmental concerns on this building. I think that we were given notice that there were potential hazards at this building, and I think that we need to, as a good steward, ensure that that building does not have any potential chemical hazards there.
So the building or the soil, the grounds?
Well, maybe both, maybe.
So I can speak to, Apollo was up there today doing a site survey to give us an additional quote on asbestos, to inspect for that. So that is pending. But if there's any other environmental concerns, then we need to seek out other inspectors to do soil. I know there was a question about the fuel tanks. We've spoken about that several times. They're contained in a containment vault, and so they're exempt to testing. I need to reach out to Panhandle Health. I've spoken to Cootney Electric about this ad nauseam, and they were consistently telling me that Panhandle Health had no concerns about them because they're vaulted. They're considered above-ground storage, if you will. But I will confirm that with Panhandle Health. So if there's any soil samples you'd like, I'm not a PCB expert, so I don't know who we would reach out to, but I can do some research to find out who checks for that.
Yeah, and I think that's really the other big issue, is just ensuring that there are none of those at that site.
And I think that Appendix D spoke to that, that I provided you folks from Cootney Electric. It spoke to PCBs and spoke to their advising that there were no concerns for that. I don't have the document in front of me, and I don't know if legal looked at that document or not, but so.
They did when we signed the purchase agreement. They looked at that document.
And they certified that there were none there?
I didn't memorize the document, but it was.
I mean, I looked at it, and I didn't see any certifications. What I saw was a document that was written by an attorney for the seller. And, you know, the problem with that is that the attorneys who write documents for you generally write them for their clients, the ones who are paying them. And I don't believe we were paying that attorney to write that addendum. I think that was the seller's attorney writing that addendum. And so their fiduciary is for their seller, not for the buyer.
Not to get too deep in the weeds, but I would point out that I would assume county legal looked at it at the time and signed off on it. County legal goes over every contract, and so at some point, county legal accepted that at the point that it was acceptable, so.
Right.
If it's not acceptable now, that's fine, but I'm just pointing out that when that was submitted to the county, obviously, I would assume county, county legal looked at that and accepted it at the time.
There is All West Testing and Budinger Testing that you could reach out to them if that's what this board is leaning towards. I don't think it would be, you know, very expensive, and if it wells some concerns, then it might be worth it. Bill?
Is that for the PCBs? Is that what you want tested for?
There are signs at the building that say PCBs, right?
Yeah, there is, there is no doubt that historically, the transformers used oil in them back in the, you know, 60s and 70s that had PCBs in the oil. They stopped using PCBs, I think, in '78. I think they were, they made it illegal. There were certain transformers still in this area that had PCBs in them. When looking, when talking with Cootney Electric, if they brought a transformer to the site that was suspected as PCB, it was tagged, bagged, and contained in a plastic container, tested. And if it came back positive for PCBs, it was immediately removed from the site. So they didn't, they didn't work on, nor did they unload any of the PCB oil at the site. But again, if there's a concern, by all means, we will seek out whoever needs to do that testing to facilitate. If we want, if you'd like core samples of the soil around the tanks, so be it. You just have to order it, and we'll figure out how to make that happen.
The big issue for me is the fact that we're asking people to work there and be there throughout the day. And, you know, a statement from an attorney from a seller, to me, is not really sufficient, and it addresses what they did up until the moment they left. What were they doing back in the early 80s? Who was there to even tell you about that? Where's the documentation that says that these things were handled the same way? Were the standards the same? I don't know. But what I do know is that we're asking employees to work there. And so from a moral perspective, I believe we have a duty to make sure that whoever works there is going to be working in a safe environment. Okay, that probably was accounted for in the pricing of this building, because it was used for a long time. The other side to this is that what happens 15 years from now? If somebody gets sick, they get cancer, and we haven't certified that that building was safe, and they decide they want to sue the county because we didn't do our due diligence. And that's the other side of this that concerns me a little bit. And so just as a matter of prudence, it seems like we should spend a little bit of money and maybe a little extra time just to ensure it, and not go by the word of the seller. Because the people who were there probably weren't there 40 years ago, probably can't attest to these things. It says in the document, and I read the addendum, that to the best of their knowledge, well, if you only had been working there for the last five years, then to the best of your knowledge, the standards that were in place were sufficient, but they weren't there 40 years ago. And so I just think it's prudent that we make sure that we do this before we start asking people to work there and before we start spending more money.
I just want to point out that it is Cootney Electric, and they still are here in our community, and they still were concerned, just as concerned with their employees' health, I'm sure, than as we are.
And, and so was the Silver Valley.
No, I don't think they were concerned back then, actually.
Well, you know, I guess what I'm saying is that those people lived among the employees. And, you know, but that's their problem. What's that?
He's got direction to get the soil tested.
So do you want to give him a budget?
Well, he'll have to bring back the contract anyway, so I don't know that.
You want an inspection for PCBs, whatever that includes. I don't know what that includes. We'll have to find the person that does that, and he'll have to tell us. And then soil samples, it's a 10-acre parcel. They parked vehicles there for many years. So, I mean, what, just around the tanks, or what's your direction where?
Do you know of a place where they may have stored these transformers?
Yeah, there's, well, they stored transformers on cement pads out there, so probably in that area. I would have to take direction from the PCB inspector first, if, you know, they would have to give guidance. But I'm talking about, is there a concern of fuel? That's the first question. Then we can take that off the table. Okay, so PCBs, we'll, I'll get with the inspector and figure out what that looks like.
And I think if you use one of the companies mentioned, if you, you know, start with them, I think they may have some standards that they look for. So when we were looking at putting the building in between these, they went and did some core samples and, you know, were able to.
I reached out to the governing company that is nationally recognized, that directs companies on PCB containment. I reached out to them and left them a voice message with a, one of the secretaries. They have not reached it back out. So I'll reach back out to them again, and they're the national company that is recognized to deal with this kind of thing. So I'll see if I can get a contact with them.
Okay, so are we good to just still approve these two inspections so we can continue on with that?
Absolutely. We should be moving quickly on this.
Motion?
I move that we approve the two inspections for KC North, their HVAC and electrical with Apollo. And I believe there was a different vendor for electrical. CTC Electrical with the sheriff's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, all right. Item 10, new master service agreement and statement of work for Motivations, that's what it looks like, Inc., and DoD Dispatchers On Demand. Lieutenant Higgins, please.
Lieutenant Higgins, for the record, yes, this is the master agreement between the sheriff's, or Cootney County, and Motivations for traveling dispatchers. It's a three-month agreement with a month-to-month after that. We've been doing some backwork, just so you know, we've been doing some backwork up to this point. And they are ready to launch on March 11th, if this is approved today. And we figure it would take about a week for the, for the first one to come through, to get trained, and then they could be on the floor in as early as the 17th or 18th of March. So the cost breakdown is as follows. There's a one-time fee of $11,740. Monthly fee for the dispatchers is $17,788.16. And then logistics for housing and travel is estimated at $15,820 a month. That could go down or up depending on what the cost for housing and flights and all that stuff. But they estimate that it'll probably go down. That's typically what happens. The total monthly cost is $110,910.18. And then a month-to-month after that is $33,608.16. And talking to Brandy with the auditor's office, there are no funds in the 120 budget, the dispatch budget. That was all absorbed with the raises that were approved in December, so the funds will have to come from some other source. She recommended the mid-year pool, I got her email, the mid-year, let's see. The mid-year wage pool or fund balance to cover the costs for this.
I would almost go fund balance, only because this is a kind of a one-time contract. It's not ongoing. And that mid-year pool would be maybe more appropriate for something that was ongoing. Does that, Brandy shaking her head yes? Bill?
That sounds fine.
Okay.
This is for two agents?
Yeah, so it'll be, it's technically, they'll have five or six dispatchers that'll be in this pool, and the service is for 80 hours a week, is what it comes down to. And how we bring them in and the hours will be dependent on the needs of the center.
And how long do you think you'll need this for?
Well, we, you know, there's two purposes for having these, these people brought in. First is to relieve the overtime that's currently being imposed on our dispatchers now. And then second, we have one new lateral starting March 4th, and I anticipate potentially up to three more starting at the end of March. And so when those laterals come in, and when we start training them, the first phase is typically call-taking. What that does is it pulls a dispatcher off the floor so they can train. And so we have to backfill that with overtime. These people will backfill that with overtime or help with that, that need. So if there are laterals, I can see them being done within two to three months. So I think at the three-month mark, we look at where we're at and determine whether or not we're going to extend it another month or not. And Motivations is aware of that. They, they're on board with this. That's one of the things we talked about. So that would be my recommendation, is if it's approved, it's approved for a three-month, and then we, at month two, we come in and figure out where we're at staffing-wise and numbers-wise, and make a determination on whether or not we continue for the next month.
The numbers in my packet are a little bit different than what you, what you were mentioning. So I just want to, is the $110,000 for all three months?
Yes, the $110,000 is the total for the three months to include the onboarding cost.
Gotcha, perfect. And then after that, it'll be?
The $33,000.
$33,000, yeah. Okay. Yeah, and Bruce, do you have a problem with fund balance versus the mid-year?
No, no, I don't. I mean, this is kind of a great example of what happens when infrastructure is not tended to. And infrastructure includes people. It's way more expensive to fix these problems when you let them get to a certain point. And my hope is, is that that will never happen again, and that we will address these issues in other areas of the county before it gets to this crisis-type situation. It's expensive.
It's expensive.
Thirty, what, $2,000 for two people?
Yeah.
I think our normal salary is significantly less for two people.
Yes.
Maybe four people, five, you know, so, yeah. Yeah, so fund balance it is.
Motion, please.
I move that we approve the new master service agreement and statement of work with Motivations and Dispatch On Demand in our 9/11 office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, all right. Item, thank you. Item 11, master service and confidentiality agreement with Data Bank Information Technology. Ms. Cole, are you on the phone?
Yes, this is Carrie Cole from IT. And items 11, 12, and 13 all go together for the Data Bank. Excuse me. Our current support vendor is Data, who has not had a support person for over a year. So I reached out to Canyon County, and they use Data Bank. So I got ahold of Data Bank. They have over 250 on-base support people. They've reviewed my outstanding list and have already given me some free help. And they're scheduling a knowledgeable agenda management product support person for me so we can get on that agenda voting, reporting thing we've been waiting on. So anyways, we want to purchase their services. So the third document, the block time agreement, is for 40 hours at $225 an hour, for a total of $9,000. And the other two documents are basic agreements for doing business with them.
Dave, is there any reason why we can't handle all three in a single motion, or you want it separate?
Just make clear what you're doing in the motion, that's all.
Okay, questions for Carrie or motion?
No questions. I'll take a stab at it. I'm just going to read all three, probably the easiest way. I move that we approve the master service and confidentiality agreement with Data Bank and the mutual nondisclosure and nonsolicitation agreement with Data Bank, and that we approve the block time services agreement with Data Bank and information technology in our own county.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, that was great. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Item 14, SCJ professional service agreement comp plan. And this is with SCJ Alliance and our Community Development Department. Director Callahan, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. David Callahan, Community Development Director. The item before you would update our comp plan, starting with data, and then reach out to the community using contemporary means of things like multimedia, Facebook, the internet, and so on. And then through that dialogue back and forth with the community, ultimately update our goals and objectives so we'd have a new, effectively, comp plan that resonates with the community. And the prices are before you, and the contract has been reviewed by our legal counsel.
All right, questions, motion?
No questions.
And this will be from fund balance as well. So Brandy, your stuff for us to sign next week will be $168,000 less than this morning, than this afternoon.
Yeah, and I would also encourage that when we redo the fees for community development, we include a comp plan as part of that over a 10-year amortization rate.
Yes, sir.
So I move that we approve SCJ professional service agreement comp plan with SCJ Alliance and Community Development.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, all right, thank you. Item 15, this is a financial budget item and its board approval request for appropriation of district fund balance for construction projects and our district court clerks.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Acacia Hill, for the record. Yes, so last year, in fiscal year '23, the board did approve a fund balance transfer from District, from the Clerks Restricted District Court Fund 45 for a project to move our JJC staff back over to the main campus. At the time, it was estimated to be approximately $39,456.85 with a 10% contingency added into that total. This project did roll in from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24. So $20,655 of that was moved back into that fund. We are now asking to move $14,695 back from the district court, excuse me, District Court Restricted Fund 45 to cover the remaining invoice totals. And that would be the end of the project. It's now completed.
Okay, but typically, we do this kind of in the fall where we've taken, where we say, okay, this project wasn't finished, but now we're going to claw back the fund balance essentially and do that.
It was a B-budget item, so it wasn't a capital. That was the reason why.
Right, so that's why I was just making, equating it to what we have done in the past, so. Yeah, questions, motion?
I move that we approve the board request for appropriation of district fund balance of construction projects, district court clerk records.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, all right, thank you. Item 16, 17, and 18, do you want to handle those together?
Brandy Falcon, for the record, I think probably separately.
Okay.
For number 16.
Well, I can read them real quick. So it's just a board approval request for the reallocation of the ARPA funds to Justice Center Expansion Project. And, yeah, if you want to, we'll just do it.
So this is going off of some board direction given at our meeting today at 1:30 to reallocate the ARPA funds from the admin HVAC of $2 million and from the jail generator project of $550,000 to reallocate those two buckets of money towards the Justice Building instead.
Does your motion need to say "to construction" or just the Justice Building?
Just the Justice Building is fine.
Okay, all right, questions, motion?
I move that we approve the request to reallocate ARPA funds to the Justice Expansion Project. I'll say "to the construction" or "the project"?
The project is fine.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, all right. Item 17, allocation of remaining LATCF funds to the Justice Center Expansion Project.
Brandy Falcon, for the record, again, I wasn't sure if this needed an official motion from the board. Previously, this, the LATCF funds have only required board direction. This more, today at 1:30, you gave board direction to allocate the remaining LATCF funds to the construction cost. Oh, because you had already made a motion last September to formally dedicate those funds to the building project. So I don't think, and Dave, unless I'm wrong, I don't think that allocating them specifically to construction cost requires a motion. That was just board direction I got today at 1:30.
It's already on, it's already on the agenda. It wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
To formalize it, I suppose.
I'm just thinking for auditing purposes.
Sure.
Might clean things up fried Bailey or whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's not as strict because it's not ARPA funds, but just to be safe, if you could do a motion to allocate remaining LATCF funds to the Justice Expansion construction cost.
Okay, motion?
I move that we approve the request for allocation of remaining LATCF funds to Justice Expansion Project.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Metari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye, all right. Item 18, reallocation of certain soft costs from ARPA to county funding. Again, Brandy.
Brandy Falcon, for the record, so again, this was based off board direction today at 1:30. We are reallocating a handful of soft-cost items from ARPA funding to county funding in order to throw all of our available ARPA funding towards the construction cost of the building. I'm just going to read into the record quickly the names of these items so that you don't have to do it in your motion. So it would be the All West Third Party. Material Testing Contract that was originally approved on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. The remaining costs of that contract, the Avista cost for the relocation of conduit for twenty thousand, three hundred and three dollars that was approved on October tenth, twenty-twenty-three, the Buttinger and Associates contract that was approved on December nineteenth, the Zibley Fiber Relocation that was approved on November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the plan review fees for Work PAC Two approved on September twelfth, twenty-three, the permits for Work PAC Two, which were approved on November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and lastly, the plan review fee for Work PAC Three originally approved on December twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three. So these are soft costs we had already incurred in FY twenty-four, and we are going to reallocate them to county funding from ARPA funding.
Okay. Do you have a total on that handy?
The, yes, I do. Give me one second. Sorry, one second. I do not have a total because one of the contracts was, has been partially paid in two different fiscal years.
Okay.
Do you need a total for your motion?
I don't.
Okay.
No, we're good. Just we'll say as stated.
Okay.
So, all right. Motion?
I move that we approve the reallocation of certain soft costs from ARPA to county funding as stated by our finance director.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Item nineteen, board approval request. This is a bid proposal for the repair of the first floor front exterior doors at the admin building with our building and grounds. And Greg, did you make it a little line? Okay. Bill, are you handling this for him?
I guess. It's as a result of the little water incident that we had.
Oh, okay. I don't, I don't remember that.
Community development?
Yeah, these are the front doors of the building, so.
Yeah, pretty much.
He said that it was water that, they're thirty years old, so, yeah. Okay. Yeah, and I think the money will come from the five-year plan money. So, Brandy, sorry, can I bother you for a sec? So this is one of those times where it's coming from five-year plan money, but this five-year plan money was not put into their budget, so do we just say it's fund balance?
You just say fund balance for full, like, for the funds.
Okay. It's, it's not very much. So, like, eleven grand or something. Okay. Any other questions or motion?
I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry. I mean, that we accept the bid proposal to repair the first front exterior doors of the admin building, for building grounds.
And that the money will come from fund balance. I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Item twenty, public defender conflict contract with Horrocks and our BOCC. Ms. Johnston, please.
Yes, this is a new public defender conflict contract from Blaine Horrocks. It's been reviewed by the Judicial Selection Committee, and he has been approved for all the categories. He's provided proof of insurance, and God has thanks just to put him to work.
Great. Questions or motion?
I move that we approve the public defender conflict contract with Horrocks and the BOCC.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Item twenty-one, board approval request, notice of termination of independent contractor agreement. And Bruce, you are listed on this one?
I am listed. We got through these items fast. This is just a follow-up from last week. We got the language for the termination of the, of the contract for consulting. And so it's just a matter of the board agreeing to it and approving it.
I would ask that instead of a March thirty-first date, that an April thirtieth date would be listed for the end of the contract, and we can use FTA funds to cover April because our FTA triennial review has been scheduled for April. And so I think it would be prudent to keep this contract in for one additional month after March.
What are your thoughts, Bill?
I think we should stick with what we did. That's, I'm not extending.
Have, have we talked with this person about an hourly rate? Because it's only two days in April.
Well, yes, that, the inspection is two days, but the questions that come along with it have not been, you know, we don't know what those are going to be because the information's being uploaded right now this week.
So how does that work, then? They upload the information this week, and then when are the questions supposed to come back to us? And when does the inspection occur? Just so I can understand this.
Yeah. I'd have to find out from Chad, from past inspections. But I think they usually have questions at the review time.
So that would be when they come out and visit?
Yeah.
See, that's, that's the only thing, is that it's two days, and it just seems like a lot. And I'm happy to do some sort of an hourly rate for that time and entertain that. But I just have a hard time with fifteen thousand dollars a month for two days for the, you know, what we're doing. And quite frankly, I'm not, I haven't, I'm not completely convinced. I'm not saying it's not there. I'm just not convinced yet that, you know, the other people involved with this report aren't really, you know, putting together the lion's share, if not almost all of it, for the county. And I'm just trying to figure out, what are these chalk marks that we, that are worth another fifteen thousand dollars? And that's what I'm having a hard time with.
So I know that there are documents and stuff that are continually being updated, and until the Transit Center gets more administrative-type help, that this person is covering those tasks right now.
Yeah. And then the only other question then is, you know, because I know this person made this comment several times about legitimately and genuinely caring about that department, and here's an opportunity where we can transition to an hourly rate and that this person can continue to operate that way without the county just paying so much. It's so much money, in my mind, especially for a small department, which we have another contractor for that small department, too. And it just, I haven't seen it. I've, I've heard some stuff, I just haven't seen it. And that's usually, that's what's giving me the, the trepidation of wanting to even extend it.
Have you met with Transit to find out?
I spoke. I spoke with a person there. And I looked at the, the prior year reports. I don't know who pulled those and the conclusions with them. And, you know, another question I have is, you know, out of three reports that we've submitted, one of them came back perfect, which is great. The other two did not. They had issues. And so my question is, if they find an issue or two, will that affect our ability to get the grants in the future? And if the answer is no, and it's really a matter of just, you know, dot this I and cross this T, then we can take care of that and move on. The other component to this is that it's been three years since the report, and to suggest that the report wouldn't, we should have been doing everything right to begin with, and we established we've been doing everything right since the last report was submitted. So my only, again, I'm trying to figure out the value proposition, is that last two days, and shouldn't the report contain all of the correct information if we've been doing it correctly all along?
Well, with the change in laws, the documentation has to change. So there's always an issue of making sure that the changes made along the way are reflective of what the intent of the federal regulations are. And, yeah, according to the training that our manager went to, it will affect, it could, it could seep into the federal funds that the, we use for the sheriff and the FAA funds, even though this is FTA, it's separate. It can, due to the, or, according to the training that he attended recently. And so I think that using FTA funds to keep this contractor on an additional month to make sure we get through this two-day inspection, I think is, is well worth the money on the FTA side.
Yeah, I'm torn. You know, I'd like to see an hourly. I would be fine with an hourly that even continued in the future for other things, but I just, I'm having a hard time accepting that it's, you know, for two days' worth of work, and it's basically to be on standby to answer questions. It's not even like to, you know, we don't even know that there's something active that we're going to be doing. It's just really more for responsiveness. I'm, you know, struggling with that.
And we really can't sit here and negotiate an hourly. As far as this is concerned, I don't think we should. If we want to go back and negotiate an hourly, I'd be in favor of that.
And I'm okay with that, too.
And if this person doesn't do an hourly, then we have essentially told our, the Transit Department has asked for this. They would feel most comfortable having this continue on for the whole month, again, because they are short in admin duties with the training that's going on, and they would really like somebody to fill in those gaps during this month. So it's not just the two-day training, it is a bunch of other stuff as well. But, you know, make a motion and see if there's a second.
I move that we approve the request for the notice of termination with the independent contractor and the BOCC.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Oh.
Commissioner Matarri?
Bill, the move, the motion, just want to make sure, is to approve the notice of termination.
Oh, approve the notice. I'm sorry. Yes.
And what date would you like that?
March thirty-one is what we have. Aye.
I'm sorry, may I get clarification on who made the motion?
Commissioner Matarri made the motion to approve the request for the notice of termination with the independent contractor and BOCC for March thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four. And I still think we should at least address an hourly rate. I'm totally open to it. So you have two commissioners, and you haven't called the third.
Bill Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Nay. All right. Item twenty-two, board approval request, growth dashboard presentation. Bruce, this is you again.
Yes. This is something that I'd thought about for a little while, talked about it. One of the things in business is that you have to have good feedback loops and understand what is going on within your organization. And for county government, it's, also includes your community, what is going on. And I noticed that we really didn't have good information. Even with community development and certain projects that would come before us, they would send emails out asking if these projects would affect their districts, and sometimes they wouldn't even reply and give us any feedback. So I talked about putting a dashboard together, similar to the dashboard you'd find in your car, that gives you information or feedback based upon what's happening. And Sarah Masters and Jonathan Gillum did a lot of work. They did the work. You know, I just had the idea, which is the smallest of the, the process here. And they worked with different department heads and elected officials. We looked at establishing a national standard to the degree that we could for workload. So for example, the prosecutor's office on national standard, a hundred and fifty felonies a year is what the typical prosecuting attorney will handle, not the office, but the attorney, him or herself. We're at a hundred and ninety. So we're stretching people. And getting that feedback and understanding where we are, I think, will help us make better decisions moving forward. And Jonathan, I'd like to have you talk a little bit about this, too, if you would, because you put together, you know, the nuts and bolts on this thing.
Yes, sir, absolutely. I think one thing I did want to point out to add to that is the constraints of when the data is available. Some reports are monthly, some may be quarterly, and some may be yearly. For example, adult misdemeanor probation, right, they can give, they give a monthly report. The prosecutor's numbers is an annual report. So it's something we did put in a disclaimer, so it's aware. Not everyone can be standardized per month. But, yeah, for example, we made it, we wanted to make it so someone with a sixth-grade education off the street can go and click on this and easily see it. You know, this is a polished draft, and all your feedback is invaluable, but we got buy-ins from, we had every department head view this that was involved. They gave their thumbs up. We had two different elected officials look at it, the prosecutor and sheriff's office. This is their data. This is all internal data, with some US federal government from the Census Bureau, right? And so essentially, we just wanted to get, get their buy-in, and they gave it, and we wanted to show it to you all in a more polished form. The point is, we have a really easy-to-look-at dashboard, and then from there, we can click on something that's more substantial. For example, clicking into the prosecuting attorney's office, and this is where we show all of our, where we came to these conclusions, right? And this is a breakdown, like Commissioner Matarri said, industry standards, a hundred and fifty case. This is what our prosecuting attorney's office is saying our felony caseloads per prosecutor is for this last year. And we have the whole breakdown tables and all the, all the data provided from the prosecutor's office with this. Yes, Commissioner?
And also, if you could scroll back to the misdemeanor caseload. You know, one of the things that was interesting, talking with our prosecuting attorney, is that when they're so overworked, they start to get into the position where they have to decide whether or not to prosecute a misdemeanor. And as we know, you know, serious crime usually starts off as minor crime. And if we don't prosecute that, then we risk having those people engage in serious crime because there was no consequence. And so that feedback loop, I think, is really important for us to look at, especially with growth decisions. And my hope is, is that the cities will look at this, because as we all know, once the land gets annexed into the city, they make their growth decisions mutually exclusive of the county. And yet the county is tasked with providing these services statutorily. Could you just run through the jail real quick, Jonathan, and just kind of show? Because that one's got a time chart.
So one more time, Commissioner?
Go, go to the dashboard and click on the jail. And then you want to just, you want to just read some of the numbers there, or you can show the chart there?
So, yeah. So with our, our jail right now, each, each year, we got reporting of the average of how many inmates we're at. We have kind of two standards with the jail of what our legal capacity is, and that's three sixty-one. And then we have what our actually max physical capacity is, and that's four fifty-one. And so this is all reporting from, from the jail, and we've annotated that our last inspection from the jail was due to inmate overcrowding, but that was the only reason that it failed. And then we have a breakdown, like I said, of where this data came from, and all, everything is sourced to where it's coming from and listed.
Are you using analytics to see what kind of a, what kind of traffic we get?
No, this isn't published.
Pardon?
This is not published, just a draft.
Okay, no.
Correct.
Well, it's, it's not advertised.
Because it's something, when it is live, that we can do.
Oh, we can track the analytics of it.
Okay, that's what I would want.
Absolutely.
And public-wise, every month or every time we update, we're archiving it. So that way, it's, it's archived there for each month or each update.
So the Planning and Zoning Commission, all of their members voted unanimously that they would like to see this as a public-facing information piece. And so I bring it before you today to respectfully request that... And so I bring it before you today to respectfully request that the board approve it as part of our website and obviously make it accessible to the public so they can see where we are and that they can better understand why we make some of the decisions that we do, because oftentimes, they don't have the benefit of the perspective that we do, so.
I like the idea a lot. It's not ready to go live, though. I have not had a chance to go through all the tabs. I, but what I did see, there was actually some grammatical errors and some other things that we could clean up. Where, where I looked, there was not a source listed, so I can get with Jonathan and let him know that. But, yeah, I haven't had enough time to go through each link, but I'd like to be able to give feedback and, you know, change some of the verbiage in there.
Absolutely, absolutely. So we can shelve this and then bring it back next week or something, I think, because...
If I have enough time, I, we have a lot of meetings all week this week, so I'll get to it, you know, piece by piece as soon as I can. But there was quite a bit of, some stuff I just wanted to bring to Jonathan's attention.
Well, we'll put it on for two weeks.
Okay.
Do the, do the tabs?
You have to come to the microphone if you're going to speak. Oh.
I have the microphone.
Okay.
I brought it to me.
Okay.
Do the colors mean anything? Or maybe you said that, like the yellow versus the red and the green?
Similar to on the dashboard of your car, when you have a yellow indicator light, that means that it's, you need to give something attention.
Okay.
And red means you probably ought to pull over and don't drive any further.
Okay, I thought that, but I thought I'd ask.
All right, thank you for bringing that forward, and I'll call for public comments. And my Zoom meeting starts in six minutes.
Yes, Ron Hartman for the record, still on the Cootie County building and inspections. I don't know if you approved an asbestos inspection or not, but asbestos can be found in the HVAC system, the flooring, and ceiling tile.
It's coming forward.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Good. The other one on electrical, I don't know if it'll include it or not, and I don't know what current code is when you change owners, but fluorescent lights, the old ones have a nasty balance to them. And you've got to be super careful with disposal and everything. I don't know what the code is for leaving those in, but again, you ought to make sure it gets signed off. Another, just an idea, I think it falls under category 14 with comp plan. For long-term planning, I think we ought to reevaluate the use of the fairground property. That is prime real estate. It's worth a lot of money. We could move the county fair or state fair somewhere else. It doesn't have to be on prime real estate. Maybe we could get that property appraised and see how much, what kind of goldmine we're sitting on, and if it could pay to move the state fair somewhere else with the building and then, uh, land and brand-new buildings. It's just a thought for long-term planning. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, 2:55, meeting adjourned. Thank you, folks.